Good evening. I'd like to call the January 6, 2020 meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. For clarification, Mrs. Thomas, will we be commencing with the installation before we take the roll?
Yes.
Very good. And before we take the roll, we have the Order of Business of Installing our four city councilpersons and the administration of the Oaths of Office. We will take them in alphabetical order, the first being Barbara Blankfeld, who will be sworn in by Mayor Fiala.
Mayor Brian, Council, and for the time sent you for having me, especially from the other county, but I'm delighted to be able to swear in a dear friend and colleague. So thank you for having me. Barbara, do raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your full name.
I, Barbara Michael.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
To support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The Charter and ordinances of the City of University Heights.
The Charter and ordinances of the City of University Heights.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As councilperson for the city. For councilperson.
For the city.
Of University Heights.
Of University Heights.
So help me God.
Next will be Justin Gould, who will be sworn in by his mother, Nancy Gould.
I state your name.
I, Justin Gould.
Do solemnly confirm to support.
Do solemnly confirm to support.
The Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of University Heights.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of University Heights.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As councilperson.
As councilperson.
Of the City of University Heights.
Of the City of University Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Next is John Rock, who will be sworn in by Mayor Michael Jordan Brennan. Well, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, John P. Rock.
Do solemnly confirm.
Do solemnly, solemnly confirm. Solemnly confirm, sorry.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the State of Ohio.
The State of Ohio.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the City of University Heights.
Of the City of University Heights.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As councilperson.
As councilperson.
Of the City of University Heights.
Of the City of University Heights.
So help me God. Congratulations. Finally, we have Michelle Weiss, who will also be sworn in by Mayor Michael Jordan Brennan. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Michelle Weiss.
Do solemnly confirm.
Do solemnly confirm.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the State of Ohio.
The State of Ohio.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the City of University Heights.
The City of University Heights.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As councilperson.
As councilperson.
Of the City of University Heights.
Of the City of University Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. With our four councilpersons sworn in, Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Blankfeld, here. Mr. Wiseman.
Here.
Mrs. Partey. Mrs. Weiss.
Here.
Mr. Erdl.
Here.
Mr. Rock.
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Mrs. Partey?
Still moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing that, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld, here. Mr. Wiseman.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Erdl.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Gudel.
Aye.
Very good. Will all those who are able, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your government for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two years ago today, the City of University Heights set forth, invigorated with a new mayor and a city council, ready to work together to accomplish positive change for our community. We had a common agenda of economic reinvestment both commercially in our neighborhoods, of community improvement, of modernization of our systems and approaches to better solving and to better problem-solving and for better city functions, of increased responsiveness and better civic engagement, for collaborating together to reach new heights. We've accomplished much these first two years, so much that to try to list everything here would surely fail for want of being truly comprehensive. But whether we're talking about holding the banks responsible for exterior maintenance on properties, even while the foreclosures they bring are merely pending, as we did on day one two years ago, or whether we're talking about University Square, the work that we've done leading to the action that will be taken tonight to make that a viable and productive property again, this mayor, this council, now reinforced by the fresh ideas and energy of two new incoming councilpersons, Barbara Blankfeld and Justin Gould, is making University Heights happen, is making University Heights attractive for new residents, and is making University Heights ever a better place to call home by the 13,000-plus residents who choose this city to live in and raise a family. Along the way, and indeed going forward, we did not and will not always agree on every detail, but we always listen to each other. We always consider the views of others. And when we disagree, we do so respectfully and do so for reasons we hold sincerely. Our community is a diverse mosaic. We find beauty in the differences, building strength from multiple perspectives. We achieve balance through seeking common ground. The oaths we took, whether moments ago or two years ago, are oaths of fidelity, of honor, of upholding the law, both to its letter and to its spirit, to the best of our abilities as citizens, as public servants, as office holders, as responsible stewards of the taxpayers' dollars and of public resources. Throughout, we hold the vision of what this city can be, melded with respect towards what this city has been. We will work with each other, with our neighbors, both locally and throughout the region, to achieve our earnest best for our community and in the end, to leave things better than how we found them. Two years ago today, we charted a new course, and we have accomplished much, but there remains much to do. So without further ado, we resume. Indeed, we begin again renewed and ready. I'd like to take this moment to thank a few people, our elected officials, who came and visited here tonight, some of whom have already left, but Judge K.J. Montgomery was here, Judge Gail Byers Williams from Southview Cliff was here, County Councilwoman Cheryl Stevens was here as well, and of course you saw Mayor Robert Fiala here from Willoughby. So thank you, all of you. I'd like to thank Kate Malone, our governmental affairs representative from John Carroll University, for allowing us to use this facility this evening for this meeting. Certainly thank my fellow members of council. I thank Callie Thomas, Mike Cook, and Rachel Mullen for the work they did to make this evening happen. And most of all, I thank my peers on council. We are ready to begin with the organizational aspects of the council, including the selection of vice mayor, by council among their peers, announcements and appointments regarding committees, and we'll begin now. And then we'll take a short break after that, so there'll be some actual business, legislative business beyond that, that if you were here for the formalities, you're not required to state them, but of course you're welcome to state them. So we'll proceed now. Thank you.
So next on the agenda is the election of vice mayor and the oath of office. Are there any motions?
Yes, Mr. Rad, I'd like to nominate Michelle Weiss to be vice mayor.
We have a nomination by Mr. Wiseman of Michelle Weiss as vice mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Erdl. Are there any other nominations? If not, we will then close nominations. Mrs. Weiss, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Is there anything you'd like to say at this time on your behalf with respect to the nomination?
You know, as the mayor pointed out in his address, we've come a long way in two years, and I'm excited for this opportunity to continue there. I want to make, and I know council and the mayor want to make, University Heights one of the best suburbs in Cuyahoga County and in the region, and I'm privileged to serve for you and with you, and again, very excited for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Is there any discussion about this nomination? Mr. Weiss?
Yes, thank you, Mr. I have some remarks on behalf of myself and the outgoing vice mayor. Sue Partey sent me some remarks that I'll read. She, well, it says, this is her, these are her remarks. "Good evening. First, I'm very sorry not to be here tonight, but I slipped on the ice and broke my kneecap recently. I've been honored to serve as vice mayor for the past six years. I'm honored and so appreciative of my colleagues' confidence in me. However, I do not believe this position should be held by the same person forever. Just as I am thrilled that we are joined tonight by two new councilpeople with fresh viewpoints, passions, and ideas, I am happy to support Michelle Weiss to be our next vice mayor and had hoped to nominate her tonight. Councilperson Weiss has already done so much to advance our city, including, but not limited to, leading on the establishment of the community investment corporation and developing tax incentives for home renovation. She has already brought her fresh lens and active on new ideas. I look forward to the next two years." And now this is what I have to say about our colleague. Councilwoman Weiss started out as a, we first saw her at council as an observer for the League of Woman Voters. I can't imagine what it's like to sit and watch a council meeting and not say anything on purpose, but she did that for a long time. It was to the surprise of no one that by the time she got on the council that she really knew what she was doing and contributed from the very beginning. I don't want to embarrass Michelle, but she is actually a force of nature, especially in the council world. So many things that we have done and accomplished in the last two years are because we sit around and we say, oh, it'd be nice to do this, do that, and by the time the week is out, we have a plan, and Michelle's made phone calls already, and she's talked to people already. I think it is so incredibly appropriate to have her as vice mayor. It will only help the city move forward and help us be more organized as a council. Her dedication, her motivation, her tact, and her insight are all second to none. And I'm more than proud to nominate her and happy to have her on council. I'm glad that she's going to be the vice mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiseman. Are there any further comments? Well, I would like to say something. In my time as mayor, Michelle Weiss has sponsored the most legislation of any member on council. Besides that, she is a strong community leader, responsible for outward reach throughout our entire community, but especially within the Jewish community, but notably throughout the entire community. While every member of our council brings strengths and merits, and while every member of our council is exceptional in their own right, Michelle Weiss is truly a first among equals. No one works harder or gets better results. And I am delighted at the prospect of working with Michelle as vice mayor here in the City of University Heights. There are a lot of other things I could say with that, but I don't want to belabor the point. I just know that Michelle was an inspiration to many, has the respect of many men and women throughout the community. And she inspires empowerment among women, both within and without, on outside of the Jewish community. So she's had my admiration for a long time, and I know she is more than, you know, worthy of this position. The only question is, are we worthy of having her in this position? So I look forward to serving with Councilwoman Weiss as vice mayor. Happy to see her nominated this evening. Thank you. Are there any further comments before we vote? If there are none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Blankfeld, aye. Mr. Wiseman.
Aye.
Mrs. Partey. Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Erdl.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Gudel.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Congratulations. If you can get to the podium, we'll start even. You'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Michelle Weiss.
Do solemnly confirm.
Do solemnly confirm.
To support the Constitution and laws.
To support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances.
The Charter and ordinances.
Of the City of University Heights.
Of the City of University Heights.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As vice mayor.
As vice mayor.
Of the City of University Heights.
Of the City of University Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Next on the agenda is the reports and communications from the mayor and the taking of action of announcement of appointments by mayor and the list of offices. Well, these, I think, are the reports and, well, the reports and communications the mayor had been dispensed with the mayoral address, and the taking of action of announcement of appointments, I believe, is the vice mayor's charge at this point. Vice Mayor Weiss, are there appointments you would like to make?
Are there certifications to activate?
Uh, let's see. Yeah, so starting from the beginning.
So the first order of business is the appointment of a council standing committee. I'd say to quote, "Does she remember that being?"
Yes.
Did I dress it up like this?
All right, well, just one moment then.
I have it.
Tell you what, I indicated earlier that we would take a recess at some point, and while I intended to make that recess, it did follow any of these appointments. Happy to entertain that recess now so we can bring up those names. For those of you who were here for the ceremonial portion of the meeting, we are continuing after the recess with the council appointments and the legislative portion. You are under no obligation, of course, to stay for that portion, though you are certainly welcome to do so as it is a public meeting. But perhaps you can take just a few moments to recess and regroup, and then we will resume the agenda. So there is a motion for a 10-minute recess. I would entertain one at this time.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Erdl, second by Mr. Wiseman. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld, aye.
Mr. Wiseman.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Erdl.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Gudel.
Aye. Hey, we are in this house.
The Board of Zoning Appeals, that's the part of the board?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Wiseman to appoint Kevin Goodman to another term of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Weiss. Any discussion? Yes?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that currently I'm the council liaison, and I agree with the mayor that they're both excellent candidates and bring a lot of value to the committee.
I would just add, here for the record, that they're both very sophisticated, and they're definitely two of our most inquisitive members on the board. Thank you both. Would you agree? Are there any further questions or comments with respect to the motion? Seeing that, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld, aye. Mr. Wiseman.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Erdl.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Gudel.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Mr. Goodman is approved for another term, and we will swear him in at the beginning of the next BZA meeting, which is this Wednesday. Next, I would ask for a motion to reappoint R.A. Jaffe to Board of Zoning Appeals. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Okay, motion by Mr. Wiseman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Weiss. I trust the comments of Vice Mayor Weiss and Mr. McConville, they can simply reincorporate them here as they were as of the book. Yes. Is there anything anybody would like to add with respect to Mr. Jaffe? There is nothing further. Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll on the motion to reappoint Mr. Jaffe?
Mrs. Blankfeld, aye. Mr. Wiseman.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Erdl.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Gudel.
Aye.
Okay, very good. And Mr. Jaffe is reappointed to another term on the Board of Zoning Appeals. I know he'll be absent this week, but we will swear in at the next meeting that he attends, which presumably will be the February meeting. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2019-74, Amending Resolution 2019-56 to City's Investment Policy. This is on second reading. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. This is second reading for amendment to the investment policy. As I said originally when it was introduced, this is a combination of analysis about 10 other municipalities, and it was also shared with a number of financial advisory professionals. So I feel it's fairly representational of best practices, and it now applies to all aspects of the revised code and will allow us to purchase five-year securities. The old policy was never updated, so we're looking to a two-year capacity, so. You have any answer to any questions, but would ask for council's approval so we can get this in. I would like to look at some longer-term purchases right now so we can, the first five of the portfolio.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Are there any questions for Mr. Kennedy? Any comments? Is there a motion? Motion to adopt by Vice Mayor Weiss. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Blankfeld. Any discussion? Seeing that, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld, aye. Mr. Wiseman.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Erdl.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Gudel.
Aye.
Very good. Resolution's adopted. Next is ordinance 2020-01, previously ordinance 2019-78. Amending ordinance number 200128, declaring improvements to certain real property located in City of University Heights to be of public purpose in connection with the establishment of tax increment financing under Ohio Revised Code, Section 5709.41. Declaring such improvements to be exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners thereof to make service payments in lieu of taxes, authorizing the execution of a tax increment financing agreement with the developer, authorizing the execution of a compensation agreement with the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District, establishing urban redevelopment tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments, and declaring an emergency. This is on second reading and emergency. Mr. McConville, I know that there were some minor changes to the previously proposed ordinance. Would you care to discuss them at this time?
Really, Mayor, the only substantive change is the elimination of specific references to the dollar amounts of the projects. In the initial ordinance, there was a reference to the Phase One portion of the project being a $20 million project and Phase Two being a $10 million project. The developer asked that we reserve those amounts for development agreement in case there could be amounts plus or minus in that case. Other than that, the developer had no substantive comments to TIP agreement. As we discussed at the last meeting, this agreement authorizes the issuance of the TIP financing, which includes the 100% tax abatement on real estate. financing, which includes a 100% tax abatement on real estate taxes for the 30-year period. The debt financing is to be used for redevelopment of the developed parcels, and the developer and owner of the parcels is obligated to make payments in lieu of taxes to service that debt. So that is what this agreement is accomplishing, subject to argues entering into development.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Are there any questions or comments with regard to proposed ordinance 2020-01?
Mayor, yeah, because we've changed the number of ordinance, and we do have one substantive change in the TIP agreement, I would ask council if they're inclined to approve the agreement tonight to do so by suspending rules so that we avoid any sort of challenge to the manner in which we adopt it. Do you have any ordinance number? If someone could. Technically, argues the first I continue, but I don't know. It doesn't seem like a second agreement, which we consider as a.
So, thank you, Mr. McConville. Is there a motion?
Please make a motion to suspend.
Well, it would be, it would be a motion. I think we'd say a motion where you say, "Motion to adopt ordinance 2020-01 on emergency with a suspension." So it would be in that one. I think you could say some.
So.
Very good. So the motion, the motion with the suspension, the motion to adopt the suspension of the rules has been made by Vice Mayor Weiss. Is there a, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Goult? Oh, this, okay, I saw what you mean. So we'll say Mr. Ratt. Very, okay, very good. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I have a couple things to say.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Go ahead.
I dare say, if people had come to council when the first university square development was approved and said it's going to be poorly designed, poorly managed, problematic, mostly empty, falling apart, and costing us a lot of pain and anguish for the next decade, no one would have voted for it. The amount of angst that this and previous councils have swallowed over this development, the number of times some new person has come before council with glossy colored photos and a great idea and promises that it won't cost us any money, and the amount of, the amount of our opinions that have been ignored by the powers that be really, really boggles the mind. And the delay in the support for this motion that people sought a minute ago has nothing to do with the way we feel about the administration and how hard you have worked and how hard the other members of our administration have worked to get this pushed through. But our job is a bit like putting together a pumpkin that's fallen off a five-story tower and making it look like a pumpkin and then carve ejaculate into it. This is, this is the best, worst idea that we have in front of us, and I'm swallowing awfully hard to pass this because I want something to happen. That place has been empty and ugly and problematic for us for a long time, and there aren't enough actionable words that I can say about the people who have been in charge of it, who aren't related to the city for the last 10 years. And I'm glad that we're finally taking a chance to do something about it. But this, this should engender skepticism as this moves forward in everybody on this, everybody sitting at this table, because we have, we have been talked to by people who, who I'm sure once in their life worked the thing at the carnival where you squirt water into the monkey's mouth and watch it go up a pole. I mean, it is, it is, it has been bad. We, we haven't had the benefit of, from a lot of the people who have been before us, of honesty, of forthrightness, and of any concern for the city. It has nothing to do with the current developers or the current people involved, but it has everything to do with the fact that when I, before I was on council and council people came to my house and talked about it, it was going to be great. We were going to get all this money and everything was going to be fine, and it hasn't been in any respect, as far as I'm concerned. Target is wonderful, and Macy's is wonderful, but from where I'm sitting, anything that can be done with this on a positive basis is only the result of the hard work that this administration and this, and this council is doing. And it may not look, it may not look like it makes sense or is the best deal to somebody who happens to be looking at this from the outside, but we haven't had a lot to it. Again, thank you to the administration and everybody who's worked on this. I'm going to vote for it, but if I could take an hour to say yes, I would, but I don't have people to come tonight. Thank you, Mr. Weisman.
You're welcome, and thank you, Mr. Weisman. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say? Mr. Erdl?
I would just like to say that it has been a long, arduous road, but I want to point out that the city has always tried to work with whomever the owner was to try and make it a viable project, and to no avail. And that's not the fault of the city. That's, the city doesn't own it, so it can only do so much. And I'm very hopeful and very excited about what we have going here now. And I would just like to say that I really appreciate the efforts of the mayor, the law director, and several of the people sitting over there that really, really worked hard and smart and got us what I think of the deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Erdl. Is there anyone else who'd like to call the record at this time with regard to this ordinance?
I would like to say a few words myself. You know, I thought about preparing some kind of comprehensive, maybe even, maybe it's not a nice word, but even graniosic in respect to, you know, what we're doing here and that this is a point in this project that we have not been at since the last time it was actually redone back in 2001. But this is no time for patting ourselves on the back. There's still a development agreement to negotiate. Mrs. Hublin, during the public forum section identified just a few of the many things we're having to consider with respect to things that we want to make sure are in that development agreement, that if something is important to the city, that it appear in writing in that agreement. And, you know, it's easy to say that once we got over, you know, that once we came to terms with the school district, and that once we put this ordinance on, on our agenda, that it's all downhill from here. And it may be, it may be that the hardest part is behind us, but the thing is, is whether it's hard or not, there's still real work ahead of us before shovels hit the dirt. But the thing is, is there are a lot of people that can take credit and deserve credit for where we've gotten to at this point. Certainly, Mr. McConville for his involvement, certainly, Mrs. Drucker, Susan Drucker for her involvement, certainly, Mr. Gregon Myers, who, when I first got here, at times it was just him and me and Luke doing the stuff until Mrs. Drucker got here. I can tell you that once we created an economic development department, there hasn't been a day that's gone by that, that somebody, usually Mrs. Drucker, was doing something with respect to working with the bondholders or the trustee or somebody connected somehow with this project, making sure this happened. I will tell you that of all the things that inspired me to get involved in city government, one of them was simply being a resident and driving by that thing every day and thinking there must be something more we can be doing to make something happen here. And this has been something that has been part of my mission to, to, to serve as the mayor of this community, to finally bring something to fruition here. The, the thing about this particular project is, like Mr. Erdl said, there were a lot of good things that the city did, and there are a lot of things that went wrong that had nothing to do with anybody who ever sat up behind, up on this, the dais. That there are things that happened that were beyond the city's control with regard to who owned this property, who sold it to whom, who managed it, how they managed it, improper incentives that were put in between private parties with whom we had no say. But the thing is, is we are the ones that live in this community, we are the ones that have to live with what does or does not happen there, and we have all worked very hard and in close consultation with the members of council to, to make something happen, to create a victory out of something which has been a loss and failure and eyesore and albatross for so very long. As saving grace, yes, you know, we did net a target out of this, where all the things that did not work, we have, one of the most successful target stores in the region, right here, people from all around shop at that target. And when you consider the disinvitational nature of the parking garage, when you consider the empty storefronts around it, and that despite of all that Macy's and Target are as successful as they are, it is a clue for how great this property can be if reworked in the right direction. And the thing that we have with this developer is a vision and the know-how and the commitment and the local history and desire and commitment to, to make something happen, to make something lasting and successful and worthy of the City of University Heights. So while I didn't prepare any remarks about how great it was that we did all this, in many respects, the real work is real, we only now just begin. But I'm elated that we've made it this far, and, and I know that we can go the rest of the distance in just a moment, so, thank you.
Are there any further questions or comments? Well, if there is none, then Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll first on the suspension of the rules.
Mrs. Blankville?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mr. Ratt?
Aye.
Mr. Goult?
Aye.
And then on the main motion.
Mrs. Blankville?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mr. Ratt?
Aye.
Mr. Goult?
Aye.
Ordinance 2020-01 is approved. Next on the agenda is the motion to hold an executive session immediately following this regular meeting for the purpose of discussing personnel, legal, and real estate matters. I do not have anything for the council to see, I believe, that requires an executive session. Does anybody else? Very good. Very good. And we will turn now to the directors' reports. Finance, Mr. Kennedy.
Very quickly, Mayor, congratulations to all the new council members. We're in the process of closing the year right now. That should be done by, hopefully, by the end of this week, and then all the good filings have to go down to the county related to the year-end 2019 and earnings balances for 2020. And so, with all that, we are totally reconciling the accounts. During that, it's just trying to get everything wrapped up these last week to move forward. We should be hearing from our auditors, which is going to be the state auditor this year to do the extra audit. I would suspect that's going to start a meeting. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Are there any questions for Mr. Kennedy?
Just your thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Erdl. All right, and thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Next is Director of Law, Mr. McConville.
All right, two things tonight briefly, counsel. First is I hope to have the mental registration redo ordinance before you have the next council meeting. And second, I want to relay to the substance of a telephone conference call that we conducted today with ExxonMobil in connection with the item property. We were updated on Exxon's ongoing dialogue with Buster to come up with a remedial action plan for the property. Buster has taken some steps to try to streamline that process for Exxon. Prelimarily, there is some agreement on a construction effort on the building that would address vapor intrusion, and Exxon has indicated that they are willing to undertake the construction prior to formal approval through Buster in an effort to eliminate any reason for delay in development of the site. So that was both surprising and encouraging to hear. Given that new information, we will have some interesting conversations, I think, coming up at BZA here on Wednesday morning with the owner of the property. I think we're finally ready to talk about a timeline for development. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McConville. And Mrs. Weiss?
Yeah, thank you. Just a question for the law director. When you say construction, does that mean all of the building, or does that mean actual, like, the ground, the gate of the?
The term that they used escapes my mind. Yeah, I'm using an acronym. It's something that they would add to, to the building itself. It's a pipe system and a fan of some kind that would drive any environmental intrusive vapors.
Yeah, so to put it in rudimentary terms, if, if the building, if the building were to be raised, then one could put a vapor barrier in and then build a new building above that vapor barrier. But you can't put a vapor barrier in without removing that building, so in the alternative, there is a system that can be put in that will allow the vapors to be routed through this pipe and up and, and out. So basically, the system, once installed, will be fairly unobvious, although in plain sight, and rather, and would route the vapors up and out and away from where people would be inside.
Yes, and what came out in the conversation is that Buster, in particular, if this particular system that they're talking about is installed, they would not even need to do testing of the air quality of the building. They know that it will work. So it's a substantial system. I'm not an environmental lawyer or environmental engineer, but we do understand that Exxon is willing to, you know, acknowledge the responsibility, install this system, and that Buster has given some preliminary indication that that would be acceptable. Exxon's indicating that they will go ahead and start the work prior to formal approval.
Okay, very good. Mr. Goult?
So what encircuses the development would this have to a person or an entity who wants to come along and develop that property? Would the building require the vapor barrier that you discussed? And if that was required, would that require an additional cost for whoever came along and wants to develop it? And then might it be too soon to ask Exxon to spend the money on this system if something else might plan later for that property?
I can answer that, too. Okay, yes, that did come up in our discussion, and if, if, if at a later date that building were to be raised, there would be the option of going either way. A vapor, a vapor barrier could then be installed, or even if a new building didn't have that vapor barrier installed, that system that is, that they're proposing, or one like it could be added to new construction and work essentially the same way. My understanding is that there would be a filing of a conditional no further action, or a conditional being in the event that this sort of thing happened again, Exxon would may be called upon again, as you described.
And just for some additional context, so that you know, have a feel for the way the city's approaching this, Exxon points out accurately that Buster has no current applicable vapor intrusion. applicable vapor intrusion regulations in place. And they have referred to restaurants and other businesses that operate with full approval under Ohio law, even though there are vapor intrusion issues. And that they have gone into buildings that are being operated as a restaurant or as other commercial enterprises, and made these repairs sort of in media rates, you know, as the business is operating, in acknowledgement of their responsibility. And we have said to Exxon, we're not okay with that. We don't want any sort of business operating where there may be a concern over the quality of the air inside the building. And that is what has prompted them to say, okay, well, we don't want to be the party holding up your development. This has gone on long enough. We will go ahead and, in good faith, make this installation.
Thank you. Very good. Are there any further questions for Mr. McConville? Very good. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Next up is Public Safety, we'll turn to Police. Chief Rogers, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll tell you all here, reporting on three items. First is regarding a crosswalk that has now been activated up on South Green Road at Sillsby, long awaited, and at this time is operational. Second item, moving to our towing service with United Towing. Tomorrow, I'll be meeting with United Towing representatives to further discuss those tow fee increases that were identified at the last safety committee meeting. And after tomorrow's meeting, I should have more information for council in the future. Third item is regarding a highly publicized crime that did occur in our city in December 20, involving assault and potential set fire. I just wanted to reaffirm to council that the police department is utilizing all resources to still actively and diligently investigate this incident. And also utilizing resources at not just local, but also state and federal levels to locate the suspect responsible for this crime and to win the count of, and to bring it to justice.
Thank you, Chief Rogers. Are there any questions for Chief Rogers?
Seeing none. Thank you, Chief. Next up, Public Safety Fire, Chief Burko, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Two items to report for you this evening. One is a reminder that this year, the fire department will be rolling out a new home safety inspection program. This will be offered to residents free of charge. Fire inspectors from the department will come out and do a safety inspection based on the state fire marshal's guidelines, and point out different hazards to you, and we will give you recommendations on how to fix them. We will also hang any smoke detectors or carbon monoxide detectors that you may need to be hung, and then we will be seeking out grant funding to try to bolster that program, too, for those resources. Second item is an update on the ladder truck. Our committee members went to the plant mid-December. We have some updated photos on our social media site, on Facebook. The vehicle is about two-thirds of the way complete at this time. They estimate to have it completed sometime in mid-February, where the committee will go down and conduct the final inspection of the vehicle, pending any findings there. Then it will be arranged to be shipped up here to northeast Ohio. It will go to a different entity so that equipment can be mounted on it at that time, and then from there to another site for communications equipment to be installed. After everything is complete with the vehicle, then we will commence training before we finally get it in service on the road, which will likely be in the spring. That concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you, Chief Burko. Are there any questions for Chief Burko? Seeing none. Thank you, Chief. Next up is Service, Mr. Corning.
No report, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Corning. Our building, Mr. McReynolds.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, council, on the new appointments and the reappointments. December 31st was the end of December, of course, for the year 2019. The permit fee total for December of this year was $5,962.56 for $364,000 worth of work. That compares with last December, 2018, where we took in $69.52, $6,952, to $875,000 for work. So this December was a little bit behind last year's December. However, overall, our permit total for the year 2019 came up to $167,192.26. That's for $20 million worth of work, and that compares with last year, where we took in a total of $148,000 for $18 million worth of working experience. The Pisa Bogo project is in plan review at this point. The Gotti accounting center just passed through, and they'll begin their own start construction. They'll be camping the location where the former Ellie's Ice Cream and Creamery was, Cedar Road, South Gate. I've been in touch with Ken Fisher, the representative for the Alexander Shul Chapel, and he submitted plans, asked all drawings. And right at this point, we're scheduling an appointment where Mr. Fisher and myself, the architect, and the fire department will go through the location and try to go from there, see what actions, show what I have to take as far as the work that's been done there so far, and what would possibly have to be done to save, for the future, for people that would come to be here. Orders on appeals, we'll meet this Wednesday at 8:00 AM, and the architectural report will meet this Thursday at 8:00 AM. The past few weeks, I've been working on the insurance survey organizational report. I'll be meeting with representative from ISO on January 31st. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McReynolds. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. McReynolds? Seeing none. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Next up is our City Engineer, Mr. Cheney.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cheney. Next is Communications and Syndication, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, congratulations to our newly elected council members, our trained council members, our new vice mayor, and if council member party is watching at home, he will soon. The January newsletter will be going to the printer tomorrow, and they'll be hitting mailboxes in all locations around town, probably by the third week of January. Work is well underway on the February issue of Mosaic. We probably still have room for a couple of stories. If you have any ideas, we could have a bunch of other stories if you have a better idea than what we have. So, you know, feel free, there's plenty of time to repeat that kind of stories. And also, we reached out to council prior to Christmas about getting quotes for the cover story, which is going to be at University Heights. Thank you for everyone who did that, got all your votes in, and so, Mayor, let's start editing that tomorrow. Again, we're all on track for the first issue of the first year for Mosaic. And later this month, I'll be attending a census meeting downtown with the county, and so we'll be coordinating plans and sharing best practices to give our census count up as, as high as we can get. Census will be mailed to every resident, every household in University Heights, starting in mid-March. So, we're talking a lot about that in our publications on our website and on social media. That's it.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Are there any questions for Mike Cook? Seeing none. Thank you, sir. Next up is Economic Development, Mrs. Drucker.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and council. First thing we're doing now is updating the business directory, although this is done every quarter. This is the version I'm working at now, will be the version that will be used in the next issue of the City Mosaic. Also, what we're doing is, I have drafted an updated version of a home-based business ordinance. And once that's been reviewed by our law director and then the mayor, I will be asking to bring that to my new committee. Thank you very much for being a committee to go report to, and to bring that for discussion at the committee level, and to see if that's something that would be forwarded to council once it's been reviewed. And then, just touching base back on the former KFC site, just the process being used is referred to as BCT.
Thank you, Mrs. Drucker.
Which is Building Control Technology for Vapor Intrusion. I yelled it, but it wasn't close enough. Yell out, and that's it for tonight.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Drucker. Does anybody have any questions, or Susan Leather?
Thank you.
Very good. Next up is Housing and Community Development, Mr. Gregory Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. As Commissioner McReynolds mentioned, at BZA, this Wednesday, when they're meeting, they'll be considering the variants related to the NAS home that's being proposed on ordinance. So that project is continuing to move forward, and subject to their approval, they'll be able to submit full construction drawings and begin construction shortly. Secondly, December 31st, we wrapped up an East Side bike survey, bike and scooter survey. The purpose of this was to just start putting some feelers out there with a larger set of the East Side communities, including Euclid, South Euclid, Cleveland Heights, University Heights, and Shaker Heights, to get a better idea of what are residents looking for, and what if a scooter or bike share program were to move into the East Side suburbs, what might that begin to look like? There were 1,185 total responses from the cities I previously mentioned, 151 responses from University Heights. And 70% of the total of almost 1,200 respondents answered positively that, on a trial basis, would they consider or expect your city to entertain bringing scooter or bike share companies that are currently operating in the City of Cleveland into your community? That's 70% of the almost 1,200, and for University Heights, 151 were in favor, or answered positively in response out of the 151. So, again, this is just a preliminary survey to begin to kind of understand what residents might be interested in. This is part of an ongoing conversation that will continue throughout the spring and summer. Third, the city submitted our CDSG application for about $38,000 for cedar-tailored streetscape improvements. So this, I know we talked about how long this has been going on at the last council meeting. This is an effort to bring streetscape elements that are currently on the Cleveland Heights side to the University Heights side, as well as bring some new elements in as far as new benches and things like that. And we worked with the Development Association, considering what those elements might look like, colors and things of that nature, when we were building out our grant application. So hopefully, we'll hear back by, not the end of November, early in February, the result of that application. And finally, we did hear back at the end of last week, that the Seward District has approved and awarded us funding for the improvements to the Warrensville, or, excuse me, Washington-Sillsby Safeway intersection. So that brings last year's grant total to a little over a quarter million dollars. So it was a very good year last year. I was talking with City Engineer Chuni earlier today. We'll begin designing for that project, and work towards bidding cap later this spring. So, that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Gregory Myers. I did have a question or a clarification, let's see. With respect to the respondents from the City of University Heights on the bicycle and scooter survey, I think I heard you say that it was 151 out of 151 positive.
Oh, my apologies. 151 were the total number of responses from University Heights, 150 responded positively or in favor of Mike.
150 to 1, in that respect, positive.
Correct.
Correct. All right. I just wanted to...
Overwhelmingly positive.
If there was somebody in this room who said, hey, I was the negative on the, oh, they were, you were counted, I just wanted to make sure that person, you said you were counted.
Yes. And I think, you know, it's important to circle back and just say that this was, again, just trying to get a preliminary feel from our communities, you know, their feedback on some of these ideas, but that this is part of an ongoing conversation, because obviously, there's a lot to consider when we're considering bringing in a bike or scooter share company into our suburbs.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Gregory Myers? Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we will turn to reports from standing committees. Some of our standing committees, or their assignments are rather new, but all the same, Building and Housing. Barbara Blanko?
Nothing to report this evening, then?
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Blanko. Community Outreach, Mrs. Pardee, I know she was unable to be here this evening. Anybody from that committee have anything they care to report this evening? Seeing none. Economic Development, Mr. Weissman?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Weissman. Finance, Mrs. Weiss.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Currently, we have a meeting set up on 1/8. We have a finance and finance advisory committee. I just want to ask a clerk, that one is in the annex, correct?
Yes, I have a mall in the annex.
You have a mall, okay. So it's just the service one, that was changed. Okay. So 1/8 is at 6:30 in the annex. Then we have, 1/16 is just the finance committee only, not the advisory. And then finally, on 1/23, we also have a finance advisory committee at 6:30 in the annex.
Just for clarification, I thought, I thought that the 1/16 meeting was off, but...
Yeah, we kept it on in case there were things that the committee wanted to discuss. And they're all a discussion about budget, and there'll be more meetings in February.
Okay, yeah, I will not be able to attend the meeting on 1/16. Okay. Very good. Okay. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Very good. And all those meetings are in the annex at 2245. Very good. Recreation, Mr. Erdel.
No report, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Safety, Mr. Ratt.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ratt. Service and Utilities, Mr. Cool.
Thank you, Mayor. Excited for our first meeting this Thursday at 6:30 in the annex building. It's been moved to school board, now the school board meeting building, where we will discuss the trash pickup of the University Heights. It's a source that really touches each and every home here. I'm excited to hear about the report before the issue's done. Thank you, finance.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Cool. Committee of the whole, Mrs. Weiss.
No remark.
Okay, very good. We have thus exhausted the agenda and the reports for this evening. Our next council meeting will be Wednesday, January 22nd, that is Wednesday, January 22nd, at the school district offices on Mirabar, in the U. Board meeting. It is Wednesday, as that is a holiday week, and Wednesday is the first available day that we, the board, room is available to us for years, so. In any further, an entertaining motion adjourned.
Check it.
Okay, motion by Mr. Erdel, second by Mr. Weissman. Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Blanko?
Aye.
Mr. Weissman?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mr. Ratt?
Aye.
Mr. Boo?
Aye. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.